Good evening. My name is Sarah Wright. I am the town moderator. And I am told and recognize that we have a quorum present. So I would like to call this meeting to order at 5:09. Thank you for your patience.
Can I ask questions?
Yes.
Jim Castenaro, District One. I just got a question for the Select Board. Is there any articles on this warrant that the representatives passed this year that you're not going to follow up on this year? Last year, Articles 10 and 16 passed and you haven't moved forward on them. We represent the people.
Mr. Castenaro, respect-
You work for us. I just want to know, is there any articles on this warrant that we're going to vote for?
And may I-
If you've got a dictatorship-
No, no.
We might as well go home.
I have some-
I want to know. Madam Chairman, could you-
So, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lee's 2021 Annual Town Meeting. I also recognize, and we can come back to that, I hear you. The warrant has been properly issued, both timely and in multiple locations. So, thank you to our constable. And please join me now, I know it's windy, but we have the flag behind you. Please join me now by standing to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. When I facilitated annual town meeting last October, that was new, not only for me, but for all of us. And I find myself and all of us back in more or less the same situation. So, this is new to all of us. I do appreciate your patience, and I want us all to get through this intact, which I know we will. But I thought we could start by, we could all start by taking this opportunity to make eye contact with someone that you know or don't know, someone you've seen lately or not in a while, someone like you who's taken the time to be here today. Please wave to them across the field. Smile in their direction. Or employ Carol Burnett's signature left ear pull, which she famously used to communicate on the air with her grandmother. It meant, "Hi nanny, I love you, I'm fine." Go ahead, try it. And while you're practicing, while we're all practicing our positive, nonverbal body language, I ask you now to close your eyes and bow your head out of respect for and in memory of our dearly departed fellow citizens whom we've lost since we last gathered together. We appreciate the many valuable gifts and kindnesses bestowed upon us by Spike Biazien, Dayton Delorme, Joan Wickham, former Lee Police Chief Jeff Rusa, and former Lee Town Administrator Your memories all sustain us, and may you all rest in peace. Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize those of you who are attending today's meeting in a new capacity. So, please rise when I say your name and remain standing. District Two Representatives Susan Harding, thank you, and Ann Langlis, please remain standing, thank you. District Five Representatives Josh Bloom and Dana Snow, thank you. And District Six Representatives Donald Rogers, thank you, Kevin Hines, thank you, and Brenda Kip St. Pierre, thank you, and Selectman Robert Jones. Congratulations to you, one and all. Thank you. Continuing on, I'd now like to introduce our honorable town officials here with me on the 50-yard line. Finance Committee Chair Nick Arienti, Town Council Attorney Jeremiah Pollard, Selectman Sean Renier, the aforementioned Selectman Bob Jones, and Select Board Chair Patricia Carlino, and Chief Administrative Officer and Town Administrator Christopher Ketchum. Last but not least, I'd like to recognize from the town offices Lindsey Broome, and Beth Mead to my left, and of course, Town Clerk Christopher Britton. Thank you all. Finally, some friendly observations and gentle reminders so that everyone has the best possible town meeting experience. I promise I'll be brief. Number one, this meeting is being recorded. You can neither edit nor delete your tone of voice, your spoken words, or your behavior from this moment forward. Our children and grandchildren are rooting for us all, so let's make them proud. Number two, as you all know, town meeting is both a process and an event. The process of town meeting is clearly spelled out in part and in whole in the town's bylaws, Town Meeting Handbook, and my personal favorite, Town Meeting Time, a handbook of parliamentary law. Tonight's event is essentially a business meeting. We are here to conduct town business. So, if I may, appeal to everyone personally and professionally from the start, I respectfully ask everyone to comport themselves as you would at any other business meeting. With dignity, integrity, and respect for all, thank you. As you know, what town meeting is not? A stump speech, an election campaign, a media circus, or a press junket. There is always an exchange of ideas and viewpoints. Questions are asked, discussion is welcome, and debate is healthy. So, my expectation is that all of this evening's discourse will be civil, and I dare say, kind. After the challenges of the last year and a half, I am so happy to see your beautiful faces, and I thank you in advance for your consideration of the town meeting process and town meeting itself. Finally, I would be remiss if I did not recognize and thank Police Chief Craig DeSantis, Sergeants Roy and Sergeant Berdick, and Fire Chief Ryan Brown for all your due diligence and public safety planning. Thank you. And now, I will, we are going to do something, again, new. You all have, on a lanyard, I believe, or on your neck or in your pocket, a clicker. So, we are going to do a tutorial, and I will turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. All of our representatives this year should have gotten a clicker. It looks like this. Very simple, when the moderator opens the vote, and she'll say, "The vote is now open." There's only three keys on here that will actually do anything. The green one is to vote yes, the red one to vote no, or the yellow button abstain. So, again, green for yes, as it says on that, red no, and the yellow abstain. You can change your vote as many times as you want until the vote closes. As soon as the moderator closes the vote, whatever button you hit last will be cast as your vote. You will see in this little screen at the top, it'll say 1, 2, or 3, so you'll know what your most current vote is. But again, if you hit yes, 1's going to appear. If you hit no, the 2 will appear, and abstain, the 3 will appear in there. When we close the vote, that's what will be cast. In an ideal world, if we were inside, we would have a screen here with every rep's name, and your name would change color. You'd know if your vote was cast. This all is, the computer will be recording all the votes, and they will be available afterwards, so you can see how everyone voted as well. And we will have a test in just a second. Question?
Yes, so there's no need for roll call? Do you want one because we will post the names and the reps?
Correct. Yep, yep. And is there any other questions about the clickers? They're pretty straightforward. Just make sure when we close the vote that whatever's on that screen is your cast vote. So, just as a test to make sure we're all good, if you like the weather that we've got for today's meeting, that's going to be our test question, so say yes, no, or abstain, and we'll just make sure that all 48 of them are working here. It is open, so go ahead and do that right now. You do not, you do not have to hit the send button. Nope. That's only, that's for a different feature that's not even enabled now, so just the red, green, or yellow. Are we ready to close the vote? Closing?
Is it supposed to be a warning before closing, like 5 seconds warning?
Yeah, the moderator will tell you, we're going to close the vote, and then, yeah, we can do five seconds if that works. Perfect. And it is one abstention, but everyone else said yes, they liked the weather, so it'll be good. Instead of a, yeah, this would replace the standing vote.
Point of order, quick question. Matt Filio, District Three. I know I say this every year. If you'd be kind enough to actually come to the microphone so everybody can hear you on TV and here, that would be greatly appreciated to everybody here and at home. That'd be great.
Yeah?
I voted no.
Oh, you know what? I just, I just looked real quick on that to see, but yeah. Since it was a test. But they did, we did have the right number, that was the important thing.
Hi, I do have a question.
Please, yes, and if you could-
My name is Cornelia Callisher, District Four. And we were talking over here, so my question had been about standing vote. So, right now, we'll be able to see, you'll be able to see, but the general public can't know what we're voting, because we're not standing or sitting.
Yeah, it'll be published afterwards.
I know, but during the meeting, so that they know how to speak to us.
Well, I mean, they would see it after the meeting. If you prefer to stand as well, I mean, I guess we could, but-
I think that would be good.
You know, that would be the, yeah.
So that they know what we're doing.
Again, if we were inside, your name would actually turn color red or green-
Right.
And you'd see it, so since we're outside, if you wanted to stand as well-
Right, so they know what we're doing, because otherwise, they don't know what we're standing for.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. Thank you for that. I will say, I was impressed when I went to the Lanesboro and the Stockbridge Annual Town Meetings recently where they use this technology. It was very efficient, and I know they're not representative town meetings, but I thought it was helpful. So, at this time, just, just again, because I know we have some new folks, and just to put a bow on this and get into our business here, all registered voters of the Town of Lee will have a right to speak. Town representatives will be allowed to speak prior to registered voters. And we do have these little three-minute egg timers. The idea behind this size meeting with the business at hand and the number of articles on the warrant is that when there are questions or there is discussion, that you come to the microphone, you address the moderator, you identify yourself by your full name and residential address, and you state your point or ask your question and get the information. We clarify and move on. It's not particularly helpful to have the same points made over and over on any one article, so please listen carefully to what your colleagues are saying and asking. And a person who is not a registered voter of the Town of Lee will require a majority vote of representatives to speak. As I just mentioned, all debate must relate to the motion and be directed through the moderator. I will recognize you, and when we get to the budget, that procedure, I'll review it when we get there. So, if you stand up and come to the microphone and tell us, tell everyone who you are.
Deidre Consolati, District Five. I have noticed in this Town Meeting Handbook, page 21, it does not state that representatives go first. Actually, the way it reads is that, let's see, "The town representatives and Lee residents may argue the pros and cons of an issue, but only after they've been recognized by the moderator." So, there is no particular order, I would like to point out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Consolati. And as I said to someone else, another representative, just before the meeting, and I remind you all, I don't know if I have a typo, I don't know if I misspoke. If so, I apologize, but I will, I will check that. And I think without further ado, we're ready for Article One, to receive the reports of the Selectmen, Town Accountant, and the other officers, boards, and commissions, and committees of the town.
Good evening. I'm Bob Jones, and I'm the Select Board, and I'm the Honorable President, choosing the first article. Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote will be seen through force of the Selectmen, Town Accountant, and the other officers, boards, and committees of the town.
Article One has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And if not, we can give our clickers a try. So, all in favor of Article One, you will vote yes? All opposed, you will vote no? And of course, if you choose to abstain? And the voting is open.
Ann Langlis, District Two. I was just going to come up and remind everybody that Cornelia had mentioned that for the people's sake who are watching and involved behind us, and maybe we could even just raise our hands when it comes to answering the questions. Not necessarily have to stand, but at least raise our hands, so that everybody can hear, see who their district people are, and how they're voting for them and representing their district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann Langlis. Right, okay. So, this is all new, right? So, we have, this is the five-second warning before we close the voting. And the motion carries. And to your point, Representative Langlis and others, logistically, I don't know if you want to make your, you know, follow up on what you just suggested now. Okay, so I feel free. All in, everyone who voted in favor, raise your hand, please. All opposed? Okay, thank you. Article Two.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote will fix the salaries of all elected officials as required by law for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020.
Article Two, Salary of Elected Officials, has been moved and seconded. This is required by state statute and establishes the amounts to be appropriated in Article Five for the moderator and the select board. And the, the voting is now open? Oh, pardon me, pardon me. Is there any discussion? I'm multitasking. And seeing none and hearing none, the voting is now open.
Excuse me, Andrea Wadsworth, District Three. I'm trying to follow this. Do we follow Robert's rules? So, I know we're voting differently, can we at least call first the motion, the second, discussion, all in favor, all opposed, then vote, so that we can know how that's going?
Okay, we'll go for it. We'll do it in that order. Thank you. So, starting with Article Three, because this vote was, okay. So, the voting for Article Two is now closed, and? Okay. And the town clerk tells me that the motion has passed, 47 to 1. Yes, and so we will, yes, all who voted in favor, thank you. And then I think we're going to change this up, starting with Article Three. I apologize. Moving right along to Article Three, the transfer of proceeds from the sale of the cemetery lots.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote will authorize to transfer the sum of $1,200 from the sale of cemetery lots receipts to the Fairmont Perpetual Care Trust account.
Thank you. Article Three has been moved and seconded. The Finance Committee does recommend approval, as you know from, I believe, your notes. And is there any discussion, any questions? All in favor, please raise your hand and click your clicker. And all opposed? Okay. Yes, any abstentions? And I will tell you that the electronic voting is now closing. And the motion carries unanimously. Article Four, Fiscal Year 2020 Prior Year Bills, this vote does require four fifths.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the following sums for the purpose of paying five invoices for services rendered in fiscal year 2020 totaling Information Technologies, $370.12. Fire EMS, $3,996.80. Water Department, $2,523, and further to provide for set appropriation, transfer the sum of $6,889.90 from available funds.
Article Four has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none and hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand and click yes. All opposed? Raise your hand and click no. Any abstentions? And the electronic voting is closing, three, two, one. And Article Four passes unanimously. Article Five, the Omnibus Fiscal Year 2022 General Fund Operating Budgets.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $20,810,971 for the maintenance of the several apartments of the town as set forth in the June 24th, Act 2021, the Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So, Article Five has been moved and seconded, and this is where I believe, I will read each line item, so I will do that now. And then if you would like to discuss any item, you will say, "Hold," and we will come back to it. So, for recommended, these are the recommended figures for fiscal 2022. For the moderator, 150. For the Selectmen, 59,475. Do I hear a question? Okay. That, that, yes, we can put a hold on that. I think you asked if that was for each Select Board member? It is not. Okay, thank you. For Town Administrator, 108,364. Finance Committee, I'm sorry, Town Administrator, hold. Okay. Finance Committee, $500. Reserve Fund, $70,000. Okay. Compensation Reserve, $75,000. Town Accountant, 117,447,000. Assessors, 105,674. The Treasurer Collector, I beg your pardon?
Hold that Treasurer Collector.
Thank you. For Town Council, 36,660. Information Technologies, 64,440. Land Use Assistant, 41,071. Okay, noted, thank you. Town Clerk, 61,593. Elections, registrations, okay, 13,200, that will be held. Conservation Commission, 3,615. The Planning Board, 7,000- The planning board, 7,581. The zoning board, 2,575. The town reports, 3,600. Office equipment maintenance, 13,260. And staff development, 4,000. Under public safety, for the police department, 1,268,415. For the fire department EMS, 947,644, will be held, thank you. The building department, 103,199. The gas inspector, 5,808. The sealer of weights and measures, 5,817. The wiring inspector, 8,307. The plumbing inspector, 7,548. Animal control, 10,211. And emergency management, 2,250. For the Lee Public Schools, under education, 9,781,925. Under public works, administration, highway construction and maintenance, I'm sorry, administration, okay, uh, but, okay, okay. The town clerk tells me administration is 45,023. The next line item is highway construction and maintenance, 383,410. That will be held. Snow and ice, 451,841. Street lighting, 76,500. Forestry, 37,400. Forestry will be held, thank you. Sanitary landfill, 24,150. Parks and playgrounds, 20,152. Public building, Errol D. Building, 29,891. And the town hall building, 50,566. The last item in public works is the cemetery, 86,620. Under health and human services, for the Board of Health, 765. Tri-Town Health, 432,973, will be held, thank you. The Breen Center for Mental Health, 2,867. The Community Health Program, 1,250. The Cable Advisory Committee, 150. The Council on Aging, 68,252. The Lee Youth Association, 54,873. And Veteran Services, 75,957. Moving on to recreation and culture, and beginning with the Lee Library, including state sources, 302,143. The Sandy Beach, 50,604. The Cultural Council, 4,800. The Historical Commission, 485. And the War Memorials, 2,900. Under debt service, the retirement of debt, 825,000. Long-term interest, 37,875. And short-term interest, $3,100. And moving on, under intergovernmental, we have the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission,
There was a hold over there. Then I will hold it for...
The planning commission will be held, thank you. And under the miscellaneous category, employee benefits, 400, 400, I apologize, let me start that over. Employee benefits, $4,438,051. Liability insurance, $112,066. Oh, yes, um, thank you. Okay, thank you. And other insurance, it is windy, but beautiful, $60,990. Other insurance, a hold? Did someone ask that to be held? You will also, I believe, see from your notes that the Finance Committee recommends approval of the entire town budget, but I know that we have holds and... If we, thank you. And we will now go ahead and move on the non-held items. We will return to the held items and take each one in order. So...
As I wasn't aware, Anne Langlis, District Two, I wasn't aware that a voter could not hold an item and that it was only district reps. So someone had yelled and asked if the select board, the selectmen's 58, 59,475 to be held, and I don't think that got recognized because they are a voter and not a district rep. So I'd like to hold that item for whoever said that earlier. I want them, it did have a hold. Wasn't sure if it was just someone who was a voter or a district rep. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Langlis. Appreciate it. The wind, believe it or not, it is a little hard to hear up here, so thank you for, for that. So let, I, do we have a motion, uh, motion and second to vote now on the non-held items? Okay. All, uh, I'm sorry. All in favor, thank you. All in favor of the non-held items, please raise your hands and click yes. Thank you so much. And all opposed, raise your hands and click no. And the electronic voting is in progress, closing now. So the non-held items pass unanimously. That's great. So we will now take each held item in turn with discussion. I believe the first held item was for the line item for selectmen. Any, is there any discussion? Any questions? It does say "select men," yes.
Anne Langlis, District Two. So this was held along with many others. In the past, I have not been a district rep in some years. In the past, Bob Nason did a fantastic job of breaking down information and actual figures in between. This isn't like this anymore for me personally, and I've had some of my district voters actually call and ask me if I could ask these questions of the things I had on hold. I had posted some information online for other people to view it, and if we could get breakdowns of, so someone asked me, as just earlier, does one selectman earn $59,000 a year? I said they don't, but let's get a breakdown so everybody can understand it.
Thank you. I, I know we, I know that is not for each select board member. I know that. Is there any further? Thank you for your patience.
Breakdown for the selectmen's requested budget is as follows. Line 5111, salaries full-time, $48,280.12. Line 5115, elected officials, $6,300. Line 5300, professional services, $720. Line 5340, communications, $450. Line 5344, postage, $600. Line 5345, advertising, $800. Line 5420, office supplies, $575. Line 5710, in-state travel, $200. And line 5730, dues and memberships, $1,550, for a grand total of $59,479, $75.
Anne Langlis, District Two, could you please tell me and the audience what the $48,280.12?
That line item is dedicated to the salary of the assistant in the office.
This is a related question. Is this information posted or within the town report listed as you gave it, Mr. Ketchin?
It is not, but it is available in the selectmen's office for public inspection.
Thank you very much. So I am just offering this, in the next year, I will make a motion on the floor that we have the town reports mailed to every citizen in the town rather than having them pick it up, just to, uh, you know, that we have this information on hand. Thank you.
So, as part of my ongoing education in parliamentary procedure, we were on a main motion there for that particular line item, so that, Ms. Consolati, that request, comment is out of order respectfully. So if we can continue with any further discussion on this particular budget item, we will then proceed to vote on this budget item and go on to the other held figures, other held line items. So without further ado, I hear and see no further discussion on the selectmen's line item for fiscal 2020. All in favor, please raise your hands and click yes. All opposed? Thank you, all opposed, please raise your hand and click no. So the mo, so that line item carries unanimously, forty-seven to zero. The next held item, town administrator, is there any discussion? Please come to the microphone, one at a time, and tell us who you are and your residential address and...
Josh Bloom, District Five, rep.
Thank you.
I saw two hands go up in opposition to the last motion, so I just wanted to find out if the hands in opposition were noted in the, were correlated, no. Okay. Where did, got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Bloom. That's important and clarifying. Thank you.
Jim Castanero, District One, what's with the 15% raise? I mean, is it a, is it a 40, 50-hour a week job? I mean, he works for two towns, and I think Lennox makes it a little bit better than we do. I don't believe anybody's worth 15% raise, so...
Noted, I... Is there any other discussion, questions?
I'm just also curious, says the last one, Anne Langlis, District Two.
Yes.
What is the purpose of the 15% raise? Why is it not a 3% raise as opposed to a larger 15% raise? Have your hours increased? Has your workload increased? That's what we're asking, Chris. If you could please explain.
Thank you.
So when I was appointed the town manager of the town of Lennox, I accepted a contract for a salary of $110,000 a year. It included a $150 mileage reimbursement. Upon my arrival, I recognized that there was a large discrepancy between the salary earned by the town manager and other members of the staff. So my salary remained flat for three consecutive years. I asked to have the mileage reimbursement removed, which happened. Upon assuming the role of the chief administrative officer for both the towns of Lee and Lennox, I requested that no salary increase be given at that time, despite the fact that I would be managing in two towns. So my salary remained at $110,000 per year without a mileage reimbursement. I did that because I felt that it was important for the individuals who would be evaluating me over the three-year pilot period to not feel that there was a financial incentive for me to participate in the only shared arrangement in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts for, for town managers. And upon completion of the three-year pilot program, which ended at the end of last fiscal year, I went six years without a raise. This is an effort to recognize, I believe, without putting words in the mouths of the eight selectmen for whom I work, I believe that it's an attempt to recognize not only the foregoing of salary increases over the course of the last seven years, but also an effort to recognize that it is the only shared town manager's position in the state. So, aside from that, I don't really have any other explanation.
Janet Warner, District Four. It's been my experience in making calls to the town hall and trying to get answers to questions, especially in the last 18 months, that Chris Ketchin has been nothing but attentive, detailed, and a class act. When he's presenting and in front of the Finance Committee, who also does a wonderful job, when I see that the Finance Committee has made recommendations for approval, I know because I've attended those meetings, they go through each of those line items with a fine-tooth comb. And I'd like to make sure that our representatives and, and voters and, and people who are in attendance know from my experience that our town is running extremely well, and my questions, whenever I have a financial question, are, are... I have a financial question, are answered completely. And Chris, I think that you've done a marvelous job by our town, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warner.
Madam Moderator, Chris Ketchin, Town Administrator, it was pointed out to me by the Chair of the Finance Committee that the line item that drives the salary line in this appropriation request is the Lee portion of the salary for both myself and Ms. Bro. It's a fifty percent share of both positions.
Thank you, Mr. Ketchin. And straight away.
Hi, my name is Lori Kropkowski. I live at 60 Prospect Street, so Josh, I'm yours. I work in the real world. I've been working for the better part of forty-some-odd years. I've never seen a fifteen percent increase. And regardless of how professional Mr. Ketchin is, that's his job. So if he wants to get rewarded for professionalism, maybe he should be in a different area. But fifteen percent is not acceptable when we see the mental health area getting... What did they get? Two something? So, no. Joshua, please, on my behalf, vote no for this. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? So we will now vote on the recommended amount for Town Administrator fiscal 2022. All in favor, please raise your hand and click yes. And all opposed, I'm sorry, please raise your hand and click no. And if you're abstaining, you know what to do. And voting is closing in three, two... One. So that line item also carries by a vote of forty-one to three to three. And we move on now to the Reserve Fund.
Hi, Andrea Wadsworth, District Three. I would like to say, this line has always kind of been a bugging for me because when we asked what this was, originally, three years ago, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then I believe it went to seventy and seventy. And Chris, please correct me if I'm wrong with those numbers. But it is a salary compensation line. And that was because, three years ago, the budgets were level and the salaries were held in this line. Now, I'd like to commend the Town Manager, Town Administrator, for now putting the salaries in the right place, but if now they're recognized in their budgets, respectively, why do we need to hold seventy thousand? And before you say it's because people are going to retire, I'd like to know who's retiring with the seventy thousand dollar benefit? And all of that is union or contract-driven? So when we have an article in the FY21 budget for fifty thousand dollars that was not acted on, and then we're going to hold seventy thousand for raises, I think that's a misuse of funds.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington. Yes, Chair Carlino? And I do think we need you at the... No worries.
Andrea, I think you're talking about the wrong article. That's the Reserve Fund that the Finance Committee has control over every year?
I'm sorry, I'm talking about the compensation...
You're talking about the next one?
Yeah.
Okay.
My bad. I think I wrote down, I marked the wrong one. Okay. So, it's the same, you have the same concerns? Right.
I just, I want, you know, our town to represent and really value our employees, and they should get their raises, but they should be recognized in the right places, in the right lines, and no more holding accounts for... Yeah. We're going to give a raise to someone after the Town Reps vote this in, and then we never get a comparison from year to year. So while everyone's upset with Chris's fifteen percent, there were people two years ago who got twenty-two percent, and nobody knew it because we didn't see it.
Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Moderator, is this line already voted?
This, yes. The Town Clerk tells me that the compensation reserve line item...
Was the one you wanted to hold, compensation reserve? Okay.
So, okay, so the reserve...
Compensation reserve.
Yes. So we're all talking about the compensation reserve line item. Is there, and thank you, Ms. Harrington, is there any other discussion? We will proceed to vote now. If there is no further discussion, but I see some...
She asked a question, but nobody's answered it.
I, thank you. I heard a question the first time, and I thought that was, we were on the wrong line items. Then I heard, then I heard a comment. I didn't hear a question, but would anyone like to address the points that Ms. Harrington made? I'm sorry.
I guess my question is, do we need to hold seventy thousand dollars in a line item when we can't fund the fifty thousand that was voted on and approved in a current
The fifty thousand dollars that was voted in the current budget is funded. It has not been spent. This line item requesting funding for unanticipated, in many respects, unanticipated personnel needs, some of those due for the cost of living adjustments. However, there are a number of other areas, such as compensated absences for retirements, which was mentioned. It also funds overlapping tenure for folks who may be leaving Town Service for any reason, including retirement, presenting an opportunity for cross-training, another form of training. And it's, we're asking for level funding for this year, but to the point, Madam Moderator, the fifty thousand dollars that was mentioned is funded. It is simply not spent.
Well, then, I'd like to make a motion to amend this line to only be thirty-five
And...
Matt Filio, District Three, can you tell me which one we're talking about? Because we held reserve, but we're talking about compensation.
We are talking about, yes, I'm sorry. We are talking about the compensation reserve.
You held reserve. You held reserve. That's why we're still talking about reserve, but we're talking about compensation, which we can't. We've already voted on it, passed it, and we're still talking about it, but we're supposed to be talking about reserve, correct? Okay. Thank you.
I want to vote on reserve, but then...
Sure. Okay. So I will make a motion that we amend the line for the finance reserve to thirty-five thousand and let the Town Manager deal with it during, for journal entries.
We, I want to make something very clear. We will never journal entry from one appropriation made by this Town Meeting to another. That will never happen under way.
Anne Langless, District Two, I appreciate your opinion, but instead of dictating to us, if you could just explain why? Thank you.
With all due respect, Madam Representative, that is not an opinion. That is a statement of fact.
I would just like an explanation, is all I'm asking for.
Hi. Okay. There is a motion to call the question. It is, yes. So we were last on Representative Wadsworth's, I apologize, Wadsworth's motion to amend. You said, I think, the finance reserve...
Yeah, and I just wanted to make a motion to call the question of the Reserve Fund line item.
Actually, we have a motion to...
Yes. So Representative Wadsworth, do you, can you put this in writing for us, please? And we will vote on the amendment. We, I did not hear, I did hear a second. Okay.
So, just a refresher on a motion to call the question. If you want to continue debating, you vote no. If you want to vote, you vote yes. This is going to end debate. It's a two-thirds vote.
Bear with us. Chris's, Town Clerk is getting the, opening the voting. But, okay, so...
I just have, Matt Tyer, District One, just a question. We're voting on the amendment now, right? So we are voting on the call, then?
That is my understanding. We are, we're going to do a standing vote now on, to call the question.
Okay.
Thank you. And we'll ask for a standing vote. All in favor, please rise. Stopping, yes. We're going to end debate. So I think that motion carries, but all opposed, may also stand for the record. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Back to the motion to amend, which I think, I can see as being put in writing. I know it was seconded. I don't know if we need to have that re-seconded, but we're now going to vote to, on the amendment to change the compensation reserve, the finance reserve, the reserve fund from seventy thousand to, you said thirty-five thousand?
Hi, Alex Hettinger, District Three. Just for clarification, I'm wondering if you can use the code numbers? Do you have those there on any of your papers? Because if we just say, you know, one thirty-two Reserve Fund, to me, that's a little bit clearer than which reserve is it?
Thank you, Representative. I have that back here, but it's so windy that I'm using the date stamped warrant from June fourth. But I agree with you, yes. So before us now is the motion to amend the Reserve Fund from seventy thousand to thirty-five thousand. All in favor, we can do another standing vote. We've got it on the clickers, okay? All in favor, you can click yes. And raise your hand, thank you. And all opposed? And I believe the motion to amend fails. We are still voting. The voting, just from the show of hands, appeared to me. Okay. The motion fails by a vote of thirty-nine to seven to one. The thirty-nine, of course, were the noes. The next held item is for the Treasurer. I apologize. Yes. Yes, the main motion for the reserve. Thank you. Two reserves in a row, it's, yes. So all in favor now of... The Reserve Fund, as recommended, on your sheet, at seventy thousand, please raise your hand or click yes. And all opposed, raise your hand and click no. Okay, so that motion carries and is passed. And now we move, I believe, to the line item for the Treasurer Collector. Is there any discussion? Yes?
Anne Langless, District Two, I did have few people call me and ask me why the figure was so high. They wanted to know if it was one position, two position, if this also included some type of secretarial, or is this just the one position? Thank you.
Thank you.
Part of the budget funds the Treasurer Collector, the Assistant Treasurer Collector, and as well as the Treasurer Collector's assistant position. So it's three positions, along with the expenses for the entire department.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, we will now vote on the Treasurer Collector. All in favor, please raise your hand and click yes. And all opposed, raise your hand and click no. And that also passes by a vote of forty-six to one. For the Land Use Assistant, is there any discussion?
Susie Harding, District Two, could you just explain the increase, please?
Yes, we recognize the need for additional support in the Land Use Office. This expands the position from, I believe it was twenty-four hours a week to forty.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, we will now vote on this line item. The Land Use Assistant, all in favor, please click yes. All opposed, please click no. Passes unanimously, forty-seven to zero. Onto elections and registrations. Is there any discussion?
Cornelia Kalisher, District Four, I just had a suggestion, maybe already being done, but the senior jobs might be a good area to offer those positions there and even reduce the salary over the years. Volunteers, other people in town might just offer their services and save us taxpayer money. Just a suggestion. Thanks.
Very constructive. Thank you so much. And, yes, the Town Clerk will address this.
Most of the elections money is for printing ballots, programming the machines, that sort of thing, but we do pay some election workers, we do have some volunteers as well, and we do have some people that have done it on senior work off also. The people that do it, they almost are volunteering, they get less than minimum wage. The vast majority, just for example, we have to, by law, have the machine for visually and hearing impaired, that's about eight hundred to a thousand dollars just for programming that for an election, so that's where a lot of that goes.
So we are, I believe, ready to vote on this item for elections and registrations. All in favor, raise those hands high and click yes. And all opposed? And that also passes unanimously. And that also passes unanimously. The next held item, according to my notes, office equipment and maintenance. Questions, discussion? Thank you.
Again, Anne Langless, District 2. Just looking for a quick breakdown of that and the same with the staff development, just so people understand what we're spending their taxpayer dollars on. That's all.
Are we on office equipment?
Yes. Yes.
These are, um, supplies that are cross-departmental. And I'll confess, I don't know the group, I, I don't know exactly the granular detail of what it, um, we usually, you know, spend, try to spend less than this. Generally successful.
Any further discussion? If not, we will open up voting. All in favor? Please raise your hand. Vote yes, uh, I'm sorry, click yes on your device. Opposed? Raise your hand and click no. And that passes unanimously. The next line item held is the one for staff development. Is there any discussion? Yes. Yes, thank you. The same question. Thank you.
To fund, uh, training opportunities for staff that might not be funded through their regular operating budget.
And I think, uh, we will proceed now to the vote. All in favor? And all opposed? And that appears to have passed unanimously, forty-six to zero, and perhaps someone abstained. Uh, moving on to the next page, uh, the next held item under, um, police, is there, I see we have some discussion? Questions?
Hi, two questions. Can you explain the increase and has there been any change in our crime rate over the last year? Thank you.
I'll defer to Chief DeSantis on the, uh, on the crime rate statistics, noting that, like everything else with the past twelve months, we were in somewhat of an anomaly that we hope to continue. However, uh, prior to last year, uh, we were funding a cruiser replacement program out of this budget, about forty thousand dollars a year. Uh, we cut that out of the budget when the fiscal crisis hit. It was one of the first things that we eliminated, uh, and this is restoring that, uh, or I should say resuming that replacement program. That's, that's the primary driver, uh, in addition to regular contractual increases that are driven by the, mostly the union contract.
Any further discussion? Questions? Oh, and, uh, yes, and Chief DeSantis, uh, perhaps can speak to and project his voice or come to the microphone, either way, and speak to the question about, uh, crime statistics.
Hi, Craig DeSantis, Chief of Police for Lee. Generally speaking, they're, they're pretty stable. Our call volume did go down a little bit, and I would attribute that to COVID. Uh, having said that, uh, the complexity of some of the investigations we had to handle went up, which was a significant increase in, uh, time needed to, to handle and resolve some of those investigations. But generally speaking, it's a fairly stable crime rate.
Thank you. I think we are ready to vote. And all in favor? Raise and click yes, and all opposed? Can click no. And that- And, and that passes, forty-six to one. The next held line item is for fire EMS. We have, yes. Questions, comments, discussion?
I just have a question, Jim Castner, District 1. Uh, I know over the years we had problems collecting our ambulance receipts, and I think it was up to like six hundred thousand dollars. Is that still up there like that, or are we collecting it? Thank you.
So from time to time, uh, as the representative intimated, there's a, uh, some fees and debts that are simply uncollectible. Uh, those, uh, uncollectible fees in the past have been substantial, as the representative pointed out. Uh, however, we've, we've seen a, a stark decline, uh, under the leadership of, uh, Chief Brown, uh, as well as, uh, a change in the arrangement with our billing provider. I, I, I can't remember the last time this electorate had to vote, uh, to write off uncollectible bills.
Can you hand us the number?
It's a, I, I, I don't remember the, when the last time it was, so I don't, I apologize. I do not remember the number. Finance Committee Chair points out, uh, that it's an eighty-seven percent collection rate at present.
Thank you. Yes?
Kathy Dowse, District 4. Um, I was a former member of the volunteer ambulance squad in my younger days. Only recently did I have my first ambulance ride. And I just want to sing the praises of having paramedic service as well as the conduct of the personnel that assisted me. And these are services that you don't really appreciate till you need them. And my only comment is, I hope they don't do twenty-four hour shifts, or if they do, I want them to come in their first eight hours to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dowse. Thank you very much. Yes. And I think we are ready to vote on this one as well. So all in favor? The votes are coming in, and all opposed? And, and that passes unanimously, forty-seven to zero. Thank you. We move now to-
Five.
Yes. Highway construction and maintenance. That, just so we're all clear, is a figure of three hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and ten dollars. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Monica Ryan, District 6. Um, is this in like road repairs, pretty much?
I beg your pardon?
Is this for road repairs of our towns? The portion that we contribute to the annual fixing of certain streets? Or is it for something else?
We are checking.
Okay.
Thank you. How about Main Street, huh?
I'm not talking about that, no. I'll leave that aside.
But it does look great, I just want to say. It looks great. Oh, yes, and, uh, uh, we'll be right with you, and then we'll go to the next person.
Essentially, the answer to the question is yes. I was simply looking for, for any remarkable anomalies in the expense. I do not, I have not seen or, like, a problem.
Thanks. That just helps me clarify whether I can ask this question. Um, so we get a certain number of streets fixed every year. They come up with a list, and we ask what those streets are going to be. Um, I was called by a person in my district today before the meeting who said that back in two thousand and fourteen, um, there was a street that was on the list to be fixed, repaired, and it never was. So I wanted to bring it to the attention of the Select Board and the DPW. Um, but it's the Golden Hill Road from Route 7 up until the Golden Hill Road Extension. It has, uh, extensive, deep, multiple potholes, and it's extremely difficult to travel on that road over really ten miles an hour without destroying your car. So that's one road that I heard from a constituent on, and I also agree with them because I use that road a lot. So that's Route, uh, the Golden Hill Road from Route 7 to the Golden Hill Road Extension is a disaster. And the other road is, um, doesn't have as many residents on it, but it's, um, the road that goes from Summer Street down to the Causeway is a very steep hill, and it has extremely deep potholes there. Some of them are almost a foot deep. And so you really have to travel carefully on that steep hill going down and coming up. Um, it looks like they did some work on it at the top of the hill this year, thank you, but there's more work down the road. It's, it's just a real danger is where, you know, I just want to bring that to your attention and hope that this money will be spent on at least those two streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. I believe we have-
Excuse me? Elsabado Lee, DPW Superintendent?
Yes, thank you.
I'd just like to address that last question. Um, as you know, every year we have multiple streets that need paving to be done. Uh, we base the paving of the streets based on a street scan, which was done back in two thousand and eighteen, which evaluated all the streets in the town. Um, along with that evaluation, we look at the traffic that's on these streets. We look, uh, look at the number of residents that are on this street, and we only have so much money every year to pave. Uh, the section on Golden Hill has been talked about today. Um, we have looked into that. That is currently on a list to be done, but, uh, the bottom line is how much appropriation and how much money we have to do on the streets. But, um, we do have the list, and, uh, once everything is approved, we'll go to the Department of Public Works, and, uh, we'll look at the streets that are in question and vote on them. That's how we come to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I just had a comment.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you tell us who you are?
Pardon? Oh, sorry, Edward Bailey, uh, fifteen A, who's the Tonic Street. Um, I think a lot of us were happy with the, the construction that we're seeing, um, but a lot of us are wondering why we're waiting to do this at peak times when New Yorkers are rushing in and at eight AM in the morning when everyone's trying to go to work. Um, if you had done this in the fall or the spring, it would make much more sense. Um, you're basically backing up traffic by doing what you're doing now, and it's just completely incomprehensible to all of us that live in that area.
Thank you, and we will- We will address this. Thank you. I, thank you.
Madam Moderator, Christopher Ketchen, Town Administrator. Uh, there's a, a couple of the Select Board members who are, were mentioning, uh, to my right, uh, the Husatonic Street project specifically was a, a state project. Um, so we're, we, we have some ability to, um, influence state projects, however, we are not, uh, the, uh, the, the agency that, that contracts for that construction. The, you know, the, there are other streets in town, um, out of Main Street being, being the most obvious. Um, you know, paving has to be scheduled, especially in the northeast during certain times of year. There's a temperature at which, um, paving, uh, projects fail frequently if it's, uh, not achieved and, and rising. Uh, so it's got to be forty degrees and rising. Um, and sometimes when you're trying to schedule projects three months out, uh, it becomes more difficult, uh, to anticipate the weather, uh, with the various contractors, uh, and, and their paving and other construction schedules. So I, I confess that construction is, uh, is, is the bane of my existence, but we've also very aggressively tried to achieve, uh, better end results, um, over the last several years. But, so we, we really appreciate, um, uh, everyone's forbearance with the, uh, with the construction.
Thank you. So I think we are ready to vote on highway construction and maintenance. And all in favor? Please raise your hand and click yes. All opposed? That passes unanimously. Forestry.
Valerie Blum, District 2. I'm wondering if someone can explain to us why, uh, the recommended amount went up ten thousand dollars, which, and the, um, amount for last year was eleven thousand dollars more than the previous year. So in the course of two years, it's gone up over two hundred percent.
Thank you, Ms. Blum.
Madam Moderator, Christopher Ketchen, Town Administrator. Uh, we are seeing a lot of things happening. Uh, a lot, there are a lot more hazard trees that are being identified, and I think our experience with the last year with, uh, folks using, uh, outdoor facilities a great deal more, we're actually becoming aware of more, uh, dangerous and hazard trees. Uh, but I think the greatest future anticipated driver here has to do with the, uh, the ash borer. Um, we're, we're not only seeing, but we're also anticipating, uh, a greater need for removal as, uh, as, as time goes on.
Yes, uh, Ms. Langlois? We're still on forestry?
Correct. So is this for a salary, or is this that we have to pay companies to come in to cut down the ash trees, just so we can understand it better?
It's the latter.
The latter, no pun intended, that's good. Uh, so we will proceed to the vote. All in favor? Raise those hands, thank you, and click yes. And all opposed? So that passes also, forty-seven in favor with one abstention. Turning now to the next page, uh, I think we had just one hold on this page for Triton Health.
Kathy Devarance, District 2. Just questioning the increase there, and then was that just an absorption of the porch light VNA? Just curious.
Thank you. And I think we have a, we have a resp- uh, Kathy, Ms. Dowse?
Another question, if you'd like to follow through with her question, that's fine, I'll wait.
Okay, so we'll, can we, uh, hear from Mr. Willis?
Certainly.
Behind you?
Hello, Jim Willis, Director, Triton Health. It's, the, the increase does absorb significant amount of porch light services, less than the school nursing costs.
Thank you very much.
Kathy Dowse, District 4.
Yes.
A former employee of the Lee VNA for many years. I was, just specifically wanted to know what services? Flu clinics, blood pressure clinics, advisory, teaching?
Formerly porch light was paid to do school nursing for St. Mary's, which was a significant cost, and the remainder of that was for blood pressure screenings, uh, the surveillance system for, uh, flu investigation, COVID-19, blood pressure screenings, and that was really all we funded for. And so the school nursing is not part of this budget, like I suggested. We had reached out to St. Mary's at the time when porch light went out of business with one week notice in a pandemic, and we offered to them that if they wanted school nursing funding- funding, they should have, they should contact the town.
Just for clarification, will we be seeing flu clinics or blood pressure clinics or services through you or your staff?
We will.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Great question, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Willis, thank you. Yes.
Alex Hedinger, District 3. This total amount, will that be split between the three towns, or is that Lee's portion of the Tri-Town overall budget?
That is the total appropriation for all three towns. The Lee portion is $140,000 for FY '22. The, it's an increase of $10,000 from the previous fiscal year, and with porch light eliminated underlying item, the town is saving almost $14,000.
Great, great, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, hearing none, we will proceed to the vote. This is for Tri-Town Health. All in favor, raise your hands and click yes. And all opposed? Click no. And that passes 46 in favor with one abstention. On the next page, I had, I heard a hold, I believe, for the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. Is there any discussion? The dollar amount, it's the next page? We're talking about $4,736, if that helps? Thank you. Yes.
Ann Langlis, District 2. I did not hold this item, I held it for someone in the audience.
Oh, yes, thank you.
So whoever they were, they can come up and ask.
Thank you, appreciate it. Did someone in the audience have a question or concern? If you can make your way to the microphone? And tell us your name, thank you.
My name's Cindy Mathias, 60, Mitterator Avenue. I'd just like to ask one question. What does they do for the town of Lee that we give them about that much every year? Thank you.
So the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Berkshire County. They issue an assessment to the 32? 32 member towns. In the MPO, they conduct the planning around the Transportation Improvement Plan, both the municipally funded projects as well as the, as well as the state projects. That's where I'm most familiar with their work, but there's a number, actually a variety of areas that are non-transportation related where they, where they coordinate planning for the entire county.
They also played a very large part in the discussion of the GE and the EPA dump. They're like behind it, and they had many executive secret meetings where they didn't release the minutes since 2013 until recently. They're a nonprofit, and I think we need to look into to see if they got any funding from GE, to see if that's one of their donors. I think we have to be wary of these people. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will point out that as a, I don't know what their status is as a nonprofit, but most nonprofits have to submit what's called Form 990 to the IRS. You can find Form 990s, I don't know if Berkshire Regional Planning submits one or not as a quasi-public entity, but there are, that may be one source to answer whatever question you may have.
Thank you, yes.
How you doing, Buck Donovan, District 1? I'm also current treasurer of the Berkshire Regional Planning, and an accusation like that is just totally out of line. Berkshire Regional Planning works tirelessly for the economic development of Berkshire County, Lee included. It's a really, it's a great resource for all the towns, and to bash it already like that with an accusation is ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Is there any other discussion? And we will proceed to the vote. So once again, all in favor? And click? Click yes? This is going to be really cool when we're indoors and we can see it up on the thing, but there's a lot of glare. That looks like it passes 45 in favor, one opposed, and one abstention. And then, bless you, we have another item here, the other insurance. Yes, Ms. Langliss?
Ann Langlis, District 2. Again, just for transparency sake to the voters and what their taxpayers' money is going to, if you could please explain that, Chris Ketchen, thank you.
I'll defer to our treasurer, who is the risk manager for the town on this, but this has to do with primarily public safety officers.
I'm Donna Toomey, treasure collector.
Thank you, Ms. Toomey, thank you.
This other insurance is for injured-on-duty insurance. All of our employees are covered by workers' comp insurance except for police and firefighters. By Mass General Law statute, we are required to carry injured-on-duty insurance for them, and that's what this is for.
Thank you so much. And seeing no further discussion, hearing none, we will proceed to the vote. All in favor, please raise your hands and click yes. And all opposed? Please raise your hand and click no. And that passes unanimously. And we now move on to Article 6.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds the following sums of money for capital expenditures of two departments of the town as follows. Town Buildings, $12,500; Town Clerk, $1,000; Technology, $20,000; Youth Commission, $25,000; Community Center Study, $20,000; Police, $5,000; Sandy Beach, $12,000; Public Works, $330,000; and Lee Public Schools, $100,000, for a total capital of $525,000.
Article 6 has been so moved. And is seconded, thank you. Any discussion on Article 6? Yes, Mr. Castemaro.
I just have a question. Why wasn't all this put in their budgets?
We usually attempt to bifurcate operating costs, the costs that are required to run the budgets of the, or sorry, run the operations of the various town departments in any given year without capital improvements. These fund the capital improvements or the non, the, we'll call them the, non-recurring is not a perfect term, but it's a better term than operating. So these will fund specific projects and equipment purchases that you wouldn't see necessarily every year.
Yes, Ms. Langliss?
Ann Langlis, District 2. The Public Works for $330,000, is that equipment? Is that, if Al could explain that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, it makes up, sorry, Madam Moderator, Christopher Ketchen, Town Administrator. There's a number of projects associated with this appropriation, and there's, there was a table that captures these in the, in the letter that was available tonight and that was mailed, and also on the website. So general fund cash is a, there's a demolition project, several equipment purchases, and infrastructure contingency, and that's actually all, almost all equipment.
Thank you.
Well, I think Chris addressed everything that is in this article, but what we're looking for is upgrading some of the equipment that we have at the DPW. Last year, we did not get any upgrade. Currently, our repair is in the red. That's because of the condition of some of the vehicles that we're using to ensure public safety during winter storms. We're looking for a one-ton roller, which we're currently renting one now, that rental fee be going towards the purchase of this roller, which is essential for day-to-day operation. We're looking for a mini excavator. This will enhance the operation at the cemetery and also water projects and so on and so forth, just day-to-day operation. We're looking for a sidewalk plow broom. This is something to be done for, used for snow removal along with water breaks and just any kind of general construction needs we have daily. We're looking for two garage lifts. That way, we can do more maintenance in the garage rather than subcontracting a lot of the work out. And we're looking for a 550. That's a mid-sized truck. This is a four-wheel-drive vehicle. Last winter, we had trouble with both our vehicles, and we actually had to use pickup trucks on these routes just to ensure that public would have safe passage. And we're also looking for a new pickup with a plow, which we can use in the alleyways and small areas, or if a truck goes down, that can get us through a storm. That's just the everything we're asking for. Yes, we do have full-time mechanic. Yep.
Thank you for all those details, appreciate it. And I should note the Capital Outlay Committee and the Finance Committee both recommend approval for Article 6. Is there any further discussion? Yes, please. And please just tell us who you are and speak into, yes.
William Rojek, District 4.
And can you speak into the microphones so everyone can hear? Thank you.
I'm just trying to clarify something. He said 525,000. He didn't put the 500 on the end of it, he should have, and if it goes in and it's on record, that's what we're voting on. So would he just put the number down?
So you're saying 525,500? As do I. Thank you. So per, yes?
Yeah, sorry, there was a typo, but I'd like to amend the total sum to be 525,500 rather than the previously stated amount.
Thank you. Are there any objections? Seeing none, hearing none, we will proceed to vote now on Article 6. All in favor, please raise your hand and click yes. And all opposed, raise your hand and click no. And that has passed, 44 in favor, with no objections and no abstentions. Moving on to Article 7, the Water Enterprise Fund Operating and Capital Budget.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to make the following appropriations to fund the fiscal year 2022 budget for the Water Department. Water operations, $1,123,751. Capital expenditures, $42,500, for a total of $1,166,251. And further, to provide for said appropriations from the following sources of revenue and available funds. User charges, $1,123,751. And retained earnings, $42,500, for a total of $1,166,251.
Article 7, so moved? And seconded? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, we will proceed. All in favor, raise your hand, please, and click yes. And all opposed? You may raise your hand or click no. And that passes? With 47 in favor? No objections, no abstentions. Onto Article 8, the Wastewater Enterprise Fund Operating/Capital Budget.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to make the following appropriations to fund the fiscal year '22 budget for the Wastewater Department. Wastewater operations, $2,214,139. Capital expenditures, $22,500, for a total of $2,236,639. And further, to provide for said appropriations from the following sources of revenue and available funds. User charges, $2,214,139. And retained earnings, $22,500, for a total of $2,236,639.
Article 8, so moved? And seconded? Any discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, hearing none, we will vote. All in favor, please raise your hand, click yes. And all opposed? You may raise your hand and click no. And Article 8 passes. 45 in favor. No objections, no abstentions. Onto Article 9.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen or other town departments with the knowledge of the Board of Selectmen to apply for and accept grants from the federal government, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or any other source to execute any documents in connection with said applications and to expend grant funds for purposes received without further appropriation.
Thank you. Article 9 is moved and seconded with a recommendation from the Finance Committee to approve. Is there any discussion? Yes, please.
Yes, I...
And tell us, please tell your name.
I am Gail Ceresia.
Thank you.
From Park Street, District 4. And I just want to clarify what...
If you speak into the microphone, you're getting a beep.
If you speak into the microphone, you're getting a feedback.
Okay.
No, speak into the microphone. You're getting a feedback.
Okay. I just want to clarify what, uh, any other source, um, of funding can be, 'cause, um, I'm concerned about private corporations.
So the question is about that phrase, "any other source," in the third line of the motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
It looks like for any other source, for any other, for, uh, for any amount, and that concerns me.
Okay. Thank you.
That could apply to multiple scenarios. They, I suppose the most frequent, uh, example that I could think of is a gift account. You know, someone, uh, you know, gives a gift, uh, of, of, of funds to the, to the town for a particular purpose. This practice allows the, um, the, the town to expend those funds for the purpose of the gift, in my example, and it's probably one of the more frequent ones, um, for whatever purpose it was gifted. That's, that's, that's an example.
Okay. What I guess I'm concerned about is recently, um, the Select Board accepted 25 million for a contract, and I don't know if that can fall under this clause. Under this article, excuse me.
That is not a grant.
Okay, then, uh, so you're just saying it's for government source only?
I'm saying that it's for whatever qualifies as a grant. That is not a grant. It is a settlement.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Well, I guess that's Monica Ryan, District Six. It could be something like maybe the Deconic Foundation that gives money to organizations. So it might be something like that, I'm guessing. You know, they're not a federal, they're not a state, but they give money and we sometimes, or certain towns may receive money, so it just allows us, I think, to use that grant money.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Comment? Seeing none, hearing none, we will proceed to vote on Article Nine. All in favor? Please raise your hand and click yes. And all opposed? You may raise your hand or click no. And? Anyone who'd like to abstain? And, uh, that passes. Forty-six in favor with one abstention. Article Ten, Road Repair and Paving.
Article Ten, Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to expend $285,149 from fiscal year 2022, Chapter 90 funds, as provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to repair and pave the town's roads.
Article Ten is so moved and seconded? Is there any discussion on Article Ten? Seeing none, we shall proceed now to vote. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Ten. So all in favor? Please raise your hands. And click yes. And all opposed? You may raise your hands and click no. And that has passed? Looks like unanimously or by a vote of forty-six in favor. Article Eleven.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer from available funds the sum of $656,659 for the following purposes. Road repair, paving debt, $116,281. School boiler replacement debt, $45,516. Dump truck debt, $178,206. Chamber of Commerce Gateway Downtown, $10,000. Chamber of Commerce, 10% rooms tax, $46,156. Special Education Reserve Fund, $125,000. Master Plan Update, $50,000. Commonwealth Matching Funds DHCD Grant, $50,000. Open Space and Recreation Plan Update, $15,000. Historical Commission Matching Funds, $16,000. Laurel Lake Preservation Association, $2,500. Berkshire Brownfields Program, $2,000, for a total of $656,659. And further, that the town vote to accept Chapter 40A, Section 13E, for the purpose of establishing the aforementioned Special Education Reserve Fund.
Article Eleven has been moved and seconded. If there's discussion, please let us know. Thank you.
I am referring to Laurel Lake Preservation Association yet one more year. If this is going to be, to be used for a pesticide for Laurel Lake, I would encourage you to vote no on this. If it is a yes to explore the other issues on the lake and its waters, I would encourage a yes vote. Thank you.
I believe there was a question embedded there, but I don't know if we, we don't, okay. I, is there anyone who can answer that? I don't know. So I'm, I'm hearing the Lennox Conservation Committee or, pardon me.
I don't want to be speaking for anyone's conservation commission.
Yes, thank you.
The, um, you know, the Conservation Commission, uh, is the proper venue, I think, for this. This is, uh, the, the annual assessment from the association to, to the towns. To the extent that there is a, um, application of a pesticide, uh, that would have to, um, or anything else that has to do with the, uh, with, uh, the, the lake in terms of its environmental quality, that a proper venue to, uh, support and/or challenge that would be either the DEP or the respective conservation commissions in both towns.
Thank you, Mr. Ketchin. Yes?
Um, I just had a general question as to why the Special Education Refurb Fund is appropriated to this part of the budget and not as part of the educational budget?
Thank you.
Hi, Andrea Wadsworth, District Three. I have the same question, and I think it's great that we're supporting special education. We should have these extra funds. But what was the law? What was the statute, Patty, that you referenced? Because I don't have it in my, my, my writing. Because DESI has advisory on special ed. Is this a stabilization, stabilization fund? Question one. What is the process for the, what is the balance in the sped revolving account in the school? Question two. What is the procedure for the school committee to come to the board and ask for these funds? How do we protect the confidentiality of the students? Um, so I need the process for that. And if it is, if we are using DESI's Section 24, Chapter 218 of Acts of 2016, I think I got that right, um, has the school committee been notified of this?
A number of questions. Thank you, Ms. Wadsworth.
So the, um, I see Superintendent Richard is, uh, standing up. I, I met, I met with Superintendent, uh, Richard as well as, um, a school committee member, Larmen, uh, when I originally proposed putting this in, in the budget. There's a statutory cap of $250,000, so this would be a one-time, or the first half of what I think, um, might be appropriate as being a two-year, um, appropriation to get us up to the statutory maximum. Uh, the, uh, this allows for the, the town to absorb, um, unanticipated special education costs that can, uh, you know, in, in some cases exceed 100 and, and in a few cases, um, you know, exceed much more than that, 100, thousands of dollars, uh, in, in any given fiscal year for which a school committee wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily budget in their operating budget. So it establishes a reserve. Uh, the, the legislature sought to, uh, establish this reserve to, uh, provide an opportunity for the school committee, followed by, uh, concurrence with the Board of Selectmen to transfer, uh, to, uh, fund these unanticipated costs so that it wouldn't, uh, be, create an undue burden on the, uh, on the school operating budget in any given fiscal year. Um, so, uh, I think it's a, uh, it's a appropriate step that we can take to, um, to, uh, help, you know, mitigate the, the fiscal impact of what is a statutorily required service. You might note that, uh, some time ago, the town of Richmond, uh, had a, had to call a special town meeting, uh, in order to accommodate, uh, the fiscal demands of, of a, of a, uh, of, of an unanticipated, uh, placement, uh, for special ed needs. This would forestall the need for that.
Yes. Thank you.
Jim Castner, District One. Can we vote on these separate? Because I don't like three or four of these things. I mean, can you go like through the budget? Hold, hold, hold them, debate them? I mean, like our master plan update. What's our master plan? Turn Lee into a dump site, right? So, I mean, and open space and recreation update? I mean, I, I don't get it.
These, these appropriations can be voted on in, you know, through amendment or other form in whatever way the representatives see fit to move, second, and consider.
Uh, the question is, is whether or not these previous plans have been implemented. If, uh, they haven't, then let's go back to the drawing board and, uh, implement them and not waste our money.
Yes.
I didn't know what word. Um, yes, corneal culture. Um, so yes, I think we definitely need a master plan. I support a master plan and support the open space and recreation plan. However, I also feel very strongly that I put a lot of time into the questionnaire last time. And, um, and I get disappointed in terms of how, uh, we have at times change in zoning for specific projects and not hold to the master plan. So I think, I, I would really want, I support having a master plan, but then we need to hold to that master plan and not change it per project. Thank you.
Thank you. And, straight away.
Hello, I'm Clara Leahy. Um, I have worked for years, several, uh, renditions of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. Uh, now we're talking about $50,000 for a master plan? I'm wondering what the master plan will be addressing other than the Open Space and Recreation Plan that we have done over the years? Have we had a master plan in place? I have not seen any evidence of that. I see that there's a town code, uh, but I'm wondering what is going to be involved with this master plan? And who will be receiving the $50,000 to implement this, uh, master plan?
Thank you, Ms. Leahy.
So, uh, master plans are, uh, typically led by the planning board. Um, if, if the question is about the master plan specifically, the last one, I believe, is over 20 years old. Uh, it was our intent to, uh, bring this before a town meeting, uh, a year ago. Uh, however, it was one of the items that was eliminated from the budget as part of our, you know, our fiscal austerity. Uh, and, um, you know, the, the master plan is, uh, intended to be a process by which you arrive at various goals and objectives through, uh, public input and participation, uh, where, uh, questionnaires and other manner of data collection are undertaken so that, um, the, uh, the, the members of the master plan steering committee, again primarily led by the planning board, uh, usually in consultation with, uh, a, a design, uh, you know, a, a, a professional facilitator, someone who, 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 uh, who helps write these plans. Uh, and that's primarily, that, that, that firm or individual's time is primarily what will be, uh, funded through this appropriation.
Okay. I, I have another question. Will the Conservation Commission, will the Historical Commission, will, um, other agencies in the town be involved in this master plan, including the Parks and Recreation Commission? Uh, because there's gotta be more than just zoning here. There's gotta be more. There's gotta be a lot of input on master overlay plans, which I see are being considered. This requires a lot of input and public hearings from the town in order to be sure that we're driving in the direction they want to go. To think that we're appropriating $50,000 for the planning board to come up with a new zoning code and plan, planning code, or whatever they do, I am not impressed with that. And the question, my question is, how many agencies in the town and departments would be involved in this? And I want to be assured, and I think we have to have a public hearing before this, and I would recommend that we table this motion for this expense. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Claire. I, I think anyone, any agency can certainly be involved with the process as much as they want to do. I think that's the intent of the master plan update, is to have the conversation of where we're going, what we're trying to do, economic development, and open space and recreation is part of that, but that's a separate plan that's being spearheaded. It's, it's a, a different aspect of it. So yeah, those things are definitely all part of, of what, and that's my hope, is to have a conversation, to get more involvement, to, you know, allow people to have input. What, you know, where do you see this going? Where do you see the town going? What, what directions are, so yeah, the answer is, I think, yes. Absolutely.
Okay. Right now, I just see this as an amount to be allocated to the planning board to update these zoning codes and so on, and look at their master-
And, and I think, I think it can go, it can go as far, or as, it can be, the scope can be as broad or as-
I understand that, but right now, we have a Parks and Recreation, a rec, Open Space and Recreation Plan. What is this going to add to what we have? We need a master plan, but it cannot be just the planning board doing that.
As I recall, the, our current master plan's about 20, I mean, around 2,000.
Twenty-something years old.
The town has to do it every now and then. 20 years is plenty long enough. It's only facilitated through the planning board. The planning board, zoning, all that, that's totally separate. This would, Claire, come on. Don't say-
No, seriously. When you start talking about overlay plans, where you're gonna be doing cluster development and you're going to be starting to increase the density of land that's used for housing in this town, and you're, you have the option to look at-
I think I had the floor.
-100 acres, which is a combination of-
Ms.
A combination-
Ms. Leahy, if, if it was hard to, I don't know if there's anything more to, that you wanted to say, sir, but I would have to turn the microphone around. It was hard for me to hear you. But come to the microphone. But come to the microphone.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I love debating with you.
The last time I looked at our master plan, it had all the aspects, economic development, transportation, Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec, it had everything, economic, transportation, community development, all of that is in a comprehensive master plan. It's not just zoning and development. That is just different.
Yeah, and if I may, Claire, just a clarification, we don't know who would be hired to help us at this point. I think that's all to be decided. I think that, that's why this is such a good process to go through, is that there's so much that we can all learn and work together on to, to accomplish the goals for the town.
It'll most likely be the Berkshire Planning, Regional Planning Commission.
And we can certainly talk about that. I don't know that that's, that, that hasn't been decided as of right now, so.
That's why I'm suggesting that this should be tabled until we have a little more input on how this master plan will be developed.
No credible facilitator will respond to a town's RFP that doesn't have the financial authorization to pay them, period.
Okay.
Bob Jones. I was involved in, for me, I was participating in putting together a master plan for Great Barrington many years ago. And ideally, it's not just, the planning board are the facilitators, but to make it really work, you have to bring in people from every segment of the community. You bring in Conservation Commission, Historic Preservation people, you bring in the zoning board, you bring in the business of the community, you bring in the nonprofits, you bring in everybody in the community to develop a master plan. The fatal flaw for most towns is, you put this all together, they put it in a nice pamphlet and they put it on a shelf. And the problem is, for planning boards, zoning boards, conservation, they forget what the master plan is really all about. The master plan, for all the boards, should be sitting on the table every time they have a meeting. That's really the problem. But a master plan is absolutely necessary because it's for us to decide the direction the town is going in and what, what's going to happen for future generations. We have to give them something to build on. We have to give them some guidance, and we have to do it together as a community.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and thank you, Mr. Donovan earlier. I, Ms. Langlis, I, was there someone behind you who was, you may have to pull that down?
I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Kathy Hall, 50 Birch Street, Lee. I am also the chairperson of the Lee Youth Commission. Thank you. Thanks. And thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to address the open space and rec plan that Claire made mention of. The purpose of the open space and recreation plan is for the town to be able to get grants for different projects within the town. And that plan has to be submitted every seven years to the state, and it is time for us to resubmit it. And every department in the town is part of that plan. So just to clarify, that that's something that needs to be done because there is a deadline for state mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
I just have a question. Eileen Doherty, Mandalay Road. All the costs here, why aren't they paid by the Biden administration for the fund that we're all supposed to be getting? Why are our taxes going up since he's giving us so much money? Anybody have an answer? Just curious. Oh, nobody wants to get up?
No, no, I just, can you re, can you repeat the question?
Okay. All of the costs for our taxes going up, the school, the paving, whatever is going to be increased, why aren't it, why isn't it coming from the government, from Biden Administration?
Okay.
Because they're going to give us so much money?
Is there, is there an item specifically in Article 11?
All of them. I just want to know why.
In Article 11, though, yes?
He seems, uh, okay, any of them.
Okay.
All right, the road paving, which we need on Mandalay Road, very much so. Because I've been there for 29 years and we have not been repaved.
I, 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 I cannot explain why President Biden has not.
So then somebody, no, no, I just want to know why we're not getting it.
Has not appropriated ones to pave Mandalay Road.
No, I'm not asking you for that. I'm asking why we have to pay for it.
I, 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 I.
Does anybody?
I don't know how to credibly answer that question.
Okay. Does anybody else have any answer for that? I'm just curious why our taxes are going to go up if our government's going to give us money to do that. Infrastructure.
Eileen, I'd just like to say one thing. The tax rate has not been sent, I'm sorry, has not been set, it won't be till about September, but our closest.
Well, who did the Main Street? Who did Main Street?
Excuse me, let me finish.
Okay.
But our closest projection is there will be no increase or minor, minor, mining this year.
So 1,016, well, 116,281 won't be increased. Is that what you're saying, Pat? Well, I'm sorry, I did come a little late. I was working, taking care of a sick person. I just want to understand this, the costs, all these costs, if you can just tell me.
Ms. Doherty, Ms. Doherty, I appreciate the question.
Mrs., Mrs. Doherty.
I'm sorry, pardon me. Mrs. Doherty, I appreciate the question, and to the extent that we have been able to address it, I hope that that has helped.
No, but that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Langlis.
Anne Langlis, District Two Rep. So my question about this $50,000 for the master plan update, and both Sean, you got up and spoke, and Bobby got up and spoke, and Buck Donovan got up and spoke. So I think my concern with some of the people behind me who clapped earlier when Claire had made the statement about having input to this, we have seen over the past, oh, 2013 was the whole start of the PCB dump issue, and we were told we were going to be involved, but we were cut out of it. And we cannot have that happen again in our town. So because of that, I understand that Claire is asking for us to table this particular situation. I can't express enough how important it is to involve all the Lee Town voters, every taxpayer, with what happens for our master plan for our town, not just decided between two or three different committees, because we've seen what happens. Our town ends up with a PCB dump.
John Cody, District Three Rep. I know we're getting caught up in some of the individual items on this, but, I mean, there's three items inherent to debt. Do we plan on not paying debt that we owe as a town? It's hard for me to believe that. The other thing is, I noticed that the Finance Committee also recommends approval, and I appreciate all their work and all their efforts that go into, you know, their input into these questions. They don't take this stuff lightly, and I'd like to, you know, let it be known that I appreciate their efforts. And I'd also like to make a motion to move this question.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Seconded, so we have a, okay. Okay. So we are going to vote right now, and I see you, we're going to vote on the motion to advance the question or call the question, and we'll do a standing vote, two-thirds required. All in favor of advancing, calling the question, please rise, please stand. And you can use your clickers too, if you'd like, but Chris will, no, don't use them, Chris will count. You have to do some quick math. Okay, so that motion to advance the question, thank you, you may, you may be seated now. That passes. So we will proceed now to vote on this question. This is Article 11, and we are now going to vote on Article 11. So if you're in favor, please raise your hand, click yes. And if you are opposed, raise your hand and click no. And Article 11 passes by 39. Two in favor, six opposed, and two abstentions. And we do have someone at the mic in the, yes, please.
I guess this is just more of a comment on the, the master plan they were just talking about. The gentleman got up and spoke, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name with the hat. I believe he said he was familiar with a plan that worked well in Great Barrington, why Lee then would not follow such a plan, why we're kind of in the midst as to how this master plan is going to go when we have a model that works so well.
Sorry, actually, my point was that the model didn't work so well. Even though there was widespread community input into the plan, I can tell you that the two biggest concerns for the people who put together the master plan, and really from virtually every area in the community, was preservation of open space and historic preservation. That was 30 years ago. Well, look what's happened in Great Barrington in 30 years. Forget about historic preservation, forget about open space, you know, they have development right. And so what I'm saying is, if you're going to put together a master plan, it should involve everybody in the community, the citizens, anybody from any group should be, have input into this thing. But what you have to do is actually implement it. It should be part of the decision-making process of every board.
I mean, quite frankly, I just moved from Great Barrington. That plan worked very well.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure where you're saying that it, that it didn't.
Thank you. We, we are moving on now to Article 12.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town appropriates $1,120,000 to purchase a new fire engine, ambulance, and associated equipment, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under, pursuant to GLC Section 44, sorry, C44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of insurance of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with GLC 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Article 12 is so moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
I apologize, Madam Moderator, I didn't get to the mic in time for the last. I would just like to say we've given you money for the master plan. Get it done quickly.
Any discussion on Article 12 now, which the Capitol Outlay Committee recommends, and the Finance Committee also recommends approval?
Alex Hettinger, District Three. Could you explain that very legalese warrant item so that we know how much we might be borrowing, how many years, what the rate might be? I know some of those things aren't known yet, but that was hard to follow.
Indeed, it was. The, towns are only permitted to borrow funds when authorized to do so for specific purposes. In this case, the statute that Selectman Renier cited is the, is the statute that is required for your approval to borrow funds for the purposes, as well as the next warrant article. Strategic decision to borrow funds rather than to pay with cash, which the town does have, is the extraordinarily low financing rates for equipment and other types of purchases. This would specifically go towards a fire engine that we would ordinarily save for, as well as a ambulance. And the, I pulled up the rates on municipal bonds, double A-rated credits. Sold today for somewhere around 1.1% for, for a, for a 10-year note, and about 1.5% for a 20-year note. So it's not a, not an extraordinarily steep curve. So we'll attempt to fit the debt service into the, the out years of our financial plan where we have debt service coming, coming off for the buildings that are around us.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion for Article 12, which does require a two-thirds vote? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hands and click yes. All opposed, raise your hands and/or click no. And it looks like Article 12 passes. 45 in favor and one opposed. Next up is Article 13, road improvements, borrowing.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town appropriates $1 million to pay the cost to design, repair, and pave the town's roads, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under pursuant to General Law C44.7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law C dot dash 4420, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Article 13 is moved and seconded. As with Article 12, this also requires a two-thirds majority. Is there any discussion? Yes?
Jim Castner, District One. So a million dollars, that's for a waterline project that, shouldn't that money have been included in that waterline project for blacktop roads?
This is, these funds would not be used to pave the, the roads that went over the waterline. It may, there may be, depending on the bid environment, be paving for those portions of the roads that were included in the waterline project where the waterline doesn't go, but it would not be, the, where the waterline goes will be paved as part of the waterline Where the waterline goes will be paved as part of the waterline project.
Yes.
So you're going to pave the roads right? Am I right? You're going to blacktop the whole roads this time instead of piecemeal them like they are because they're terrible?
And as always, the aspiration.
Any further discussion? We shall move to the vote. And all in favor, please raise your hands and click yes. If you are opposed, click no. So it appears that Article 13 has in fact passed, forty-three in favor and one opposed. Which brings us now to Article 14.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve an exemption pursuant to Chapter 28A, Section 21A of the general laws, for the Board of Assessors to hire one of its
Thank you. Article 14 has been so moved and seconded. And 268A is the correct statutory language. Is there any discussion? Please come to the microphone.
Renee Calashe, District 4. I apologize, I appreciate, Chris Ketchum, that you offered time to ask questions in office hours, I really do appreciate it, I wasn't able to call. I just don't understand it. Could you just, in simple words, explain it to me, please?
If a board is going to supervise one of its own employees, they need an exemption under state law, and the town meeting needs to approve it. So, the theory being that if you are an employee supervised by the board that appoints you, it should come to the legislators to be approved before it happens. So, just one board, some towns do other boards, and in this case, they're looking for authority to hire one of their own members.
Thank you.
Jim Castner, District 1. Who is this getting hired?
So, this statute doesn't apply to anyone in particular, and it is not a requirement. It simply gives the town the option to appoint a staff person to an appointed board position. So, while retaining a majority presence of non-staff. The... I will say that the current staff person is a highly knowledgeable, very effective member of the staff, who has a very productive and collegial working relationship with the remaining board members since the passage of Mr. Delorme. So I think she would make an excellent candidate for the appointment to the Board of Assessors. That is not a requirement if you accept this statute.
Yes.
Hi, Anne Lang, District 2. So, am I getting this right, that it seems to me, I could be totally wrong, that it's basically looking for approval to overlook a conflict of interest?
No. No. So, the conflict of interest statute, 268A, prohibits certain types of appointments, period. Then there's other types of appointments, such as this, which you can authorize. But yes, the potential conflict, which is being supervised by the board that looks over the work, so if they hired a secretary that was not on the board, you don't have a fellow board member overlooking it. So, the question is whether this town meeting is going to exempt that so they can appoint one of their own board members. You can say yes, you can say no.
So, I would suggest that we say no, in my opinion, because if we make an exemption for one board, there's going to be another board looking for another exemption, and our select board typically step in when there's a situation like this, and I don't see a necessity to change what the laws in Massachusetts already are.
Mrs. Doertie?
Yes, can I ask a question? Are there any people that are... That take tests to get political jobs? Like, appointed? Why are you laughing?
Because they're mocking me. I did not take a test. But, continue.
Well, my mother worked for the city of Yonkers for thirty-five years, that's all she ever did. Because that's the way she was able to raise two young girls.
Sure, and your question, I'm sorry? For this, for...
Well, at one point, she had a fight, well, she had to go legally for her job, because she got ninety-eight out of a hundred to become the registrar of Ida Statistics in Yonkers. Because somebody else fought it that didn't take the test.
I see.
She had to wait two years to get that job. But she got it. I was just wondering, is there any positions that you have to take a test in Lee? To get the promotion or to become in control?
The administrative assessor or any other?
Anything.
Understood, thank you.
What's that?
Well, the assessors have to be certi...
I have to go online?
The assessors have to be certified, but I think what you're thinking of is civil service.
Yes, of course.
And the smaller towns are not in the civil service system.
So our town hall is not civil service?
That's correct, yes.
Oh, thank you.
Monica Ryan, District 6. I'm against this because I don't even know who the person is, but I just feel like there's a board, and the board does oversee that department, and it's too much of a conflict. You know, we had a problem a few years ago where they had, you know, there was a problem with the assessors' office where they had charged, I think, Hartwood Road the wrong tax rate for a few years, and they weren't even able to get any recompense from it, that mistake, and, you know, I just feel like the clean way to do it and the proper way to do it is to have people on the board who are not overseeing, you know, people that are employed, you know, that they shouldn't be on both. If the person gets hired, then just step off the board. It's one or the other, that's the way I feel it should go, the correct way. Thank you.
Andrea Wadsworth, District 3. I'd like to say the person we're talking about, even though it is not named, as a public person could name that person, is highly qualified for this position. Being an assessor right now is a field that a lot of people are not entering in, we're losing assessors. She would be bringing expertise to the committee. I would argue that if we're going to make this exception, that we are very careful how we rewrite our charter to limit governance of other boards. So if the board so writes that they will accept this, this is now a precedent that we should mimic.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Carli, no?
I'd just like to follow up, that I know her name too, but I don't feel right putting her... She did not ask for this. There's a number of towns in Massachusetts that have this same model, it works well. The girl in the office is currently certified all the way to do this job, she's very well qualified. The board also is certified, any new person that was elected to the board would have to be certified. And the way she explained it to me was, I do the job now, this allows me to sign off where I can't now because I'm not a part of the board, and I think they're just looking to make the board more effective.
Yes.
Josh Bloom, District 5. Ms. Carlita, sorry, I'm not getting your name correctly. If you're referring to adult women who work for the town, please to refer to them as women and not girls.
Thank you. Mr. Ketchum?
So, on behalf of my staff, I want to point out that the scope of this article and the motion that is before you is not about an individual, it's about an authorization to empower a board to take an action. It is why I think it's important to focus on that element of what you will hopefully approve, and not on individuals, though. The incumbent were to assume this role, she is indeed quite a valuable member of our
Thank you.
Just for clarification, this is Alex Hedinger, District 3. For clarification, when I read the explanation and when I read the article, I'm curious if this enables somebody to be on a board and then get hired, or be hired and then be appointed to the board? Does it work in both directions, or is it only in one direction? Because these seem to be conflicting, like the warrant says the board to hire one of its members, and the explanation says to authorize the appointment of the administrative assessor to membership. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear which way we're talking about.
Thank you.
So the board provided the language for the article, though I will say that the hiring decision is the town administrators.
Thank you.
With substantial input and consultation with the board.
Thank you. And if I am reading this crowd correctly, we should proceed to the vote. So all in favor of Article 14, please raise your hands, click yes. If you are opposed, you may click no, and also raise your hand. If you would like to abstain, you can raise your hand, too. Article 14 carries, the vote is twenty-eight in favor, fourteen opposed, and four abstentions. Which brings us now to Article 15.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town bylaws regarding dog licenses in the manner enumerated in Article 15 of the warrant for this town meeting.
Article 15 has been so moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Then we shall vote now on Article 15. All in favor, please raise your hands, click yes. And all opposed, raise your hands, click no. And that motion, that article, rather, passes forty-four in favor, one opposed, no abstentions. We now move to Article 16.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the select board to transfer property jointly owned by the towns of Lenox and Lee to Edith Wharton Restoration, Inc., also known as The Mount, as specified in Article 16 in the warrant, and further to authorize the select board to submit a petition to the General Court for a special act authorizing the transfer of said parcel under Article 97 of the amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution. You have a town council comment. This motion needs to be amended from 3.2 acres to the current proposal of 1.4 acres to remove the Laurel Lake shoreline, and I believe there will also be a request for a right of first refusal by the respective towns of Lenox and Lee.
Thank you. I'm sorry, so... Yes, okay, thank you. Article 16 so moved and has been seconded. Ms. Consolati?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to bring Susan Whistler, the executive director of The Mount, to the floor to make a presentation.
And that had...
Is there a second?
I heard a second, thank you so much. So, we can just do a standing vote on this motion to allow Ms. Whistler to speak? Thank you, thank you all. The floor is yours, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I can speak from this microphone, or I'm happy to move up, whatever people would prefer.
Your choice.
All right, I'm going to lift the mic a little higher, thanks. And thank you for allowing me to speak. So I've met with many of you, and basically Article 16, again, authorizes the transfer of, with the amendment, a total of 1.39 acres of Edith Wharton Park to The Mount, and this is acreage on Laurel Lake Road. It is the original farmhouse built by Edith Wharton back in 1906. It's under the jurisdiction right now of both conservation commissions, who are formulated and do a wonderful job in terms of protecting open space, but the preservation and rehabilitation of a structure is a bit beyond their reach, and yet it's a marvelous structure, and it is right within the wheelhouse of what Edith Wharton Restoration and The Mount intends to do, and what we see as our mission, which is the preservation and protection of Edith Wharton's original estate. And this farmhouse was definitely a part of that. We have established that Edith and Teddy Wharton built it in 1906. And for that reason, it's very important to us, we're willing to pay the appraised value of the property, as a number of concerns have been expressed over the course of the last several weeks or month. One was the extent of the shoreline that was proposed to be included as part of the conveyance. In immediate response to that, we reduced the size of the proposed parcel to be transferred from 3.4 acres down to 1.39. Members of the Lee Select Board also expressed concern based on the fact that, not too long ago, 2008, The Mount faced financial difficulty, and what would happen if that were to occur again? And so we are more than happy to include in the purchase and sale agreement a right of first refusal to the towns, so that in the event something were to happen, the towns would have the first opportunity to reacquire the parcel. And then lastly, there was, again, considerable concern about the shoreline. I'm here to sort of publicly commit to, in addition to conservation restrictions over the bulk of the 1.39 acres, to also include a right of public access across the property along the shoreline, so that there can be one contiguous path for the public to enjoy. And of course, public access will be maintained. And so that is the bulk of the proposal. I know Article 16 is complicated, but it's actually, the bottom line is very straightforward, and I appreciate the members' consideration, the representatives' consideration and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you all. And with that, I would like to make a motion, the following motion, and put this on the floor, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 16 of the town warrant to reduce the portion of land to be transferred from 3.4 acres to 1.39 acres, such portion consisting of the particle designated as Lot 2 on the survey dated April 2, 2012, and referenced in the article. And so what we're trying to do here is opening up that piece of shoreline and allowing it to be used by the citizens of Lee and Lenox in perpetuity. Are there any questions?
Could you, Ms. Consolati? Could you just add to that motion the right of first refusal and the public access, and then we'll write it, you and I can write it. It's 1.39. The original was 4.48 acres. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, 3.4.
Correct.
Yep.
Now, once again, you had asked to put into the motion...
That the respective towns will have a right of first refusal, and there will be public access.
public access, and I'll try to write that motion here.
All right, so that the towns will have the right of first refusal and the people will have access.
So the motion to amend has been so moved, made and seconded and is being-
What do you like to discuss?
Formalized on the floor. And I will, if you could just give us one moment, thank you. Yes, and, right, and all of the discussion at this moment, as the town clerk graciously reminds me, should be on the motion to amend, not on the Article 16 itself. This discussion should only be on the amendment, and then once we vote on the amendment, we'll go back to the main motion. And while we're waiting, the town clerk has an announcement?
Just real quick, come to our attention that some of the pages on your vote tally sheet may not have the backside printed, so if the reps could just write their votes for 18 through 22 on there. And make sure at the end, when we do adjourn, that you bring the clickers back up to this front table, please, so we can reuse them.
It's up to, do you mind reading it? Thank you. So Ms. Consalati will now read the amendment that we will proceed to vote on.
All right, here we are once again, and this is the, what I had written and spoken to you about before with the addition of words by Jeremiah, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 16 of the town warrant to reduce the portion of land to be transferred from 3.4 acres to 1.39 acres, such portion consisting of the parcel designated as Lot 2 on the survey dated April 2, 2012 and referenced in the article, and to grant a right of first refusal to the towns of Lee and Lenox in the event of a subsequent sale as will public access along the shoreline.
Thank you.
All right, and so we, we have a second, and is there a discussion?
Yeah. Yes, thank you, thank you. It's the witching hour. Is there any discussion on the now motion and seconded motion to amend? The motion to amend, we have it in writing, and we will proceed to vote?
No, we got it.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion to amend, as just outlined and described in detail? Thank you, please raise your hand, click yes. And all opposed, raise your hand and click no. We're still tallying. And the, the motion to amend carries 43 in favor, one opposed and one abstention. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Whistler, we appreciate it. And now we're back to the main motion on Article 16. Is there any discussion now?
Yes.
Yes, and I, I'm sorry, I should, I should acknowledge the folks who are right behind you, they've been waiting.
Well, I tried to get up before DeeDee did, so I've been trying to get up to the mic for past 15 minutes.
Okay, but they've been standing in line. Yes, and you, right, so, please.
John Cody, District Rep. 3, or District 3. All right, thank you for your time.
Of course, of course.
We have been presented with a unique opportunity to save a building with significant historical value as well as being an important part of our local community's history. The farmhouse has been vacant for approximately 12 years. I've spoken to town administrators in the past about the liability the building presents to the town of Lee and Lenox as it deteriorates. Towns are generally not in the business of restoration, but I believe The Mount is in a position to be the perfect stewards to save this building. I support this article and feel that it would be unconscionable for us to lose this important part of our local history. I encourage the people of Lee and Lenox to take advantage and enjoy this gem of a town park, Edith Wharton Park, speaking of. Please explore, enjoy and respect this property. I also appreciate the people of Lee and Lenox to have the foresight to protect this property in the beginning.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. And now we'll jump to the back. Thank you.
Thank you. My, my name is Michael Miller and I am the, asking for the representatives here to allow me to speak on this issue for a total of the three minutes that's allowed. This will be the first opportunity that I would have, that I will have to have any comments on this, even though I own the land opposite the park and have done so for 30 years. As Susan said, she spoke with a lot of you, unfortunately she never bothered to speak to me about this and no one else did, no one in, of any physical capacity or any other The first I heard about it was 10 days ago when I read it in the Berkshire Eagle that a plan had been vetted and approved and discussed-
Thank you.
-and was being presented to the both town meetings of Lee and Lenox.
Mr. Miller, I am sorry to interrupt you, thank you. I didn't quite catch it, so I understand now you are not a resident of Lee?
I am not a resident.
Correct.
Actually, a small piece of my property is in Lee, but I am basically a resident of Lenox.
Thank you. So just as a quick point of order, we do have to officially take a vote. I didn't catch it, I apologize. We need a motion to allow Mr. Miller to speak. All in favor? Okay, boys vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, I apologize, continue.
Thank you very much. As I said, I am here for two reasons. The first is transparency, and that is that I was never given an opportunity to have any input on this project, so thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to, the other, I would like to say that in the short time that I was given to have some knowledge about this proposal, I've developed a counterproposal that I would just like to put on the table for you people to think about, for both towns to think about. I believe that this presents a situation that is much better than the one that you are being asked to vote on today. For example, this proposal, I've been told by attorneys, it's going to take several years to be approved, it has to go all the way up through the legislature and the governor's office and so forth. So very briefly, very briefly, I'd like to read my quick proposal just to give you a sense. I am willing to remove or relocate the deteriorated farmhouse located on the property referred to as the Edith Wharton Park. This will include return of the land to its natural condition. All of this work will be done at no cost to Lee and Lenox and will be completed as soon as possible. In addition, I will make a donation for conservation purposes to Lee and Lenox equal to the appraised value of the parcel. As an alternative to the demolition of the farmhouse and to accomplish the intention of Edith Wharton Restoration to preserve and restore it, I would be willing to share the cost of relocation onto the existing Wharton property. I have actually spoken to a major house moving company, a national and international company, who looked at the property already through Google World or whatever and have said that this can be done. The advantage to this proposal over Article 16 is as follows. One, this will expand the existing parcel of conservation land, which will, which will, under my proposal, which will remain owned by Lee and Lenox rather than to a private party, The Mount, who for the next whatever number of years will have to be dealt with for further usage of that conservation land. Also, my proposal has no, will not require any state, federal or regulatory approval and can be consummated immediately, eliminating years of, excuse me, potential delays. If, if the choice is made to remove or relocate, as I'm proposing, this will eliminate the expense of Lenox and Lee maintaining this farmhouse. Whereas, also, this wasn't told to you, but whereas a sale may require 75% of the proceeds received go to the state and federal governments, 100% of a conservation donation will go to Lee and Lenox under my proposal.
Mr. Miller, respectfully?
Well, I'll wrap it up, thank you.
The egg timer doesn't lie.
Okay, so my plan eliminates construction disruption, traffic congestion, safety and parking issues, and I just want to have this put on the table for consideration. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. And if you can, please again identify yourself, full name and residential address, thank you.
Yes, I'm Bill Matthews, 54 High Street in Lee, and that's part of District 2.
Thank you.
And I am also Secretary of the Lee Historical Commission, and I want to speak in favor of this article as a wonderful way of preserving a historic farmhouse and combining it with the excellent programs of the Edith Wharton properties. So I think I speak for the rest of the commission on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Hi, Marge Cox, Fox Hollow Road, and I work at The Mount, and I'd like you to know that Edith Wharton and Teddy event firstly had all the land from Route 7 down to Laurel Lake. Unfortunately, some of that land was sold off. This is a significantly historic home and it will be restored just like the mansion itself, and I ask you to please vote in favor of saving that house. I didn't know it was, the alternative was to get rid of it, so now I'm a little frantic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. And Ms. Whistler, if you have a final point?
Yes, just a final point. Again, this article authorizes the select boards to enter into negotiations for the purchase and sale, and so it's our commitment, just as we are with our neighbors on Plunkett Street, to be good stewards and good neighbors, and so all of that will be taken account in the discussions, and I certainly hope that Mr. Miller will participate with us in them, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan?
Monica Ryan, District 4. I'm totally for this article. I think it's the greatest thing we could do to give back to The Mount what was originally theirs and is historically theirs, and it's just a total win-win. I love The Mount, I am a member of The Mount, and I love their grounds and the fact that they let us use the property for free last year during the pandemic, anybody could own their property. It's just a total win-win, they're going to take care of a building that we haven't been able to take care of. Destroying it or relocating it would be a very, very bad decision. Once you destroy it or remove it, it just, you know, you're taking away the history. I mean, you may as well just take The Mount down. God, so please, let's pass.
Thank you. There's no further discussion, we will, if there is, please make your way now and we will proceed to the vote afterwards.
Sorry, I'm breathing.
No worries.
I'm in favor of this, however, I'm confused by the person across the street from The Mount in terms of, I definitely don't want it destroyed, it's a historic building, but if it's to move it to The Mount property, that's something we could consider, I'm not sure, it's new information, so I would, I feel like there's a press to move forward and yet maybe we should hold on this to think about the different options and have this gentleman with the select board think it through carefully so we're not in a situation like we've been in the past where we make a decision without all information and lose a piece of property or potentially not lose a piece of property. I'm not sure how to vote, honestly. I just want to not make a rash decision like we've done like with the other place in Lee. So I don't know how to, if anyone can say whether that makes sense or not to me from the select board?
Yes, and as a professional courtesy, I know it's hard when you're at this microphone, you can't see if anyone's at the one right behind you, but we will allow Ms. Whistler to, I think, speak.
Yes.
I'm asking the select board.
Oh, okay, fair enough. I, so, can the select board, someone from the select board respond? Thank you.
Cornelia, just like Susan had mentioned, this is not a commitment to sell. It allows us to negotiate a sale. Now, we won't be coming back if we come to a conclusion saying, yes, we're going to do it, but it allows us to work all those things out that were brought up, like the right of refusal, all of that, so I don't know what you're referring to. And we just, Mr. Miller's speech was new to us, too.
Right, so what I'm saying is, since that is new information, should we, before we're voting to sell the property to The Mount, which I like, consider that first because he's also offering to move it to The Mount. I don't know how, I just want to understand.
So, Ms. Whistler, yes?
Yes, so I just wanted to give a quick, I guess, counter, blow-by-blow counter to the Millers' proposal. So the advantage he exists, listed where it would expand the existing parcel of conservation land, which will remain owned by Lee and Lenox, that is not correct. The public will continue to have access to 16 acres and conservation restrictions will remain in place on 16 acres, so nothing is, and that has changed. It is true that there will leave federal, state and regulatory approval required, but the town of Lenox has been through this process twice before. It is, you know, it's got a lot of steps to it, but we, I think both towns know how to do it, and so that won't be an impediment. The sales proceeds to Lee and Lenox will be the same as and not more than the sale proceeds that The Mount itself is willing to pay, and then there, I mean, I can rebut each one. The issue of moving the property, the house, to The Mount- The issue of moving the property, the house to The Mount, is not practical, because we don't have the room for it. And secondly, why would one want to destroy the historic integrity of the beautiful farm complex that exists down at the lakes? Wharton designed it with a specific purpose in mind, with a specific aesthetic, and moving the, the, the house actually essentially takes all the magic and interpretive value out of it. So for those reasons, I would ask that we continue to move forward with the Article 16 that's on the table.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan, thank you. Cody, Cody, thank you.
John Cody, District 3.
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to move this question, please.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cody, there's a motion to move the question, it has been seconded, so, on the motion to move the question, all in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you, and now we will proceed with the vote. I'm sorry. All, all opposed on moving the question, please raise your hand. We, we vote that, that, yes, we're all set with that. Anyone opposed to moving the question can raise your hand. You can abstain. So we will now proceed with the vote on Article 16. Please get your clickers and raise your hands. If you are in favor, you will click yes. And Chris asks for a second to open the vote.
We're now all with go.
Okay, thank you. And of course, if you are opposed, you can raise your hand, you can click no, and you may also abstain with your clicker. And the Article 16 passes, 40 in favor, none opposed, and one abstention. Thank you so much, I know that was complex, and we thank all of our neighbors. Thank you, yes. And at this time, we have had a request for a five-minute recess, so we will meet back here in five.